Good evening. I got, I got a director back there. I got, I'm on camera tonight. That's awesome. Thanks, thanks Tracy. She's gonna go out with a bang for me here tonight. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We were previously in closed session. We are now into open session and to start off our open session, we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have our fifth grade leadership students here tonight and they're experts at saying the pledge. And I would love if they would come to the podium and that they would start us off and lead the pledge. So if you are able, please stand and join our fifth grade leadership team in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, fifth grade. Yes, I love, I love passing that off to the experts over there. So you are also our spotlight on education tonight, our fifth grade leadership students. And you volunteered with Feed My Starving Children and we would love to hear all about it. So the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Lydia. I have been on the leadership team for two years and I've enjoyed lots of fun activities while participating. One of my favorites has been going to Feed My Starving Children. I think this experience was very good, not only because we got to do a fun activity that involved lots of teamwork, but also because we got to do, we got to have empathy for those who don't get the food and nutrition they need every day. It is very important for a leader to have empathy because leaders need to be able to show others how to be kind and caring.
Hi, my name is Maren. I have been in leadership for two years. I have experienced some fun things, but I think the best experience was going to Feed My Starving Children. Not only did we learn about leadership and caring for others, but we also learned about working as a team. When we were packing the food, we all had to work together. If one person wasn't doing their job, the process wouldn't work. We all had to work as one to pack as many bags as we could. Going there was a wonderful experience. Just knowing that I would be helping so many people encouraged me to work faster. If I could go back there, I would bring as many people as I could because I am very sure they would love it too. I am very thankful that we took this trip and I think it taught us all an important lesson about teamwork and caring for others. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Kaden Sprennan and I'm in fifth grade. This is my first year in the leadership program and I enjoy being part of the team and the roles we play at, at the school and part of our Amory community. On March 4th, we got to go on a field trip to Feed My Starving Children. I'm happy Mr. M signed us up to do this experience. It was my first time. I really enjoyed filling the bags with soy, veggies, rice, and protein. It was fun taking turns at our station, doing all of the different tasks. From measuring out each item to making sure it was the correct weight, it made everyone feel included. Every box we filled with thirty-five bags, our leadership team did a cheer. That part was also fun. In leadership, part of our role is understanding empathy. So it made me sad knowing that not many children do not get good food and nutrients like I do. I'm grateful that I get the food and proteins that I need to help my brain and body grow strong from home and at school. After our time was up, we gathered in the big fellowship hall. It was awesome to see on the big screen how many boxes overall we packed and how many children we fed and it will impact throughout the year. I hope we can do another fun field trip like this, even if it's just within our community. Thank you, Mr. M, for letting our leadership group experience us and I hope you continue to do this in the future. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Hello, my name is Edith Greason. This year, Amory Intermediate School Leadership went to Feed My Starving Children. This month, during our time there, we made many, many memories that we will never forget. One experience at Feed My Starving Children not only helped children around the world, but it also gave us a chance to realize what children our age were going through. It also showed us how much hope we could bring to families around the world. We spent two hours packing, bagging, weighing, sealing, and boxing many meals for many children. Our time there gave us many reasons to be grateful for what we have and realize how we can help. I really enjoyed this year at leadership and all the fun trips that we did. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Coralindis. I've been in leadership for two years and we have done some fun things, but this is my favorite and meaningful activity that we have done. Our leadership group was invited to Feed My Starving Children in Eagan, Minnesota. Feed My Starving Children, Children is a program that feeds families in need or can't afford food. We, when we got there, a staff member from Feed My Starving Children spoke to us about people in the world that, that, the struggles that they have providing food for their family. So we volunteered to come and help package food like veggies, soy, vitamins, and rice. We packed all those items and shipped them all over the world. I thought, I thought this was a caring program for people in need. So if you are interested in going to Feed My Starving Children, gather six friends or family members to go to their website and tell them you would like to volunteer. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Another thing I'd like to point out is the guy that, the staff that leads the company there is a Amory graduate. So he was very proud to see us there and gave us some stories about his time here in the past as well. So if you have any questions for our leadership students?
Twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six meals packed. Did you all pack all of those or was that for like the day or the, the time that you were there? How, what, what did that encompass?
Um, that was the time that the, there was many, there was many people there. Um, and the time that we had, all those people worked together and we all did it.
Wow.
There was a hundred, a hundred and four people there with us. There was a couple other schools there. And their goal is to get, I think to each group to pack forty boxes and we did fifty-five. So we were hard to the curve.
And so, and now you said like after every thirty boxes, you did a cheer?
After every thirty-five bags, you do a cheer.
Thirty-five, thirty-five. Do you guys remember the cheer yet?
What did, you guys had a couple of them?
Oh, you just, okay. Gotcha, gotcha. I thought, I thought maybe there was like an organized, like something or another.
They did have a Warrior Way cheer, but I, what was it?
It was like, warriors will pack.
Yeah, Amory Warriors, we pack.
All right. Nice job. I like it. I like it. Oh, hey now, hey now. Oh, that was pretty witty there. That was pretty witty. And you all, it sounds like you all had a great time. You'd go back. You'd do it again. It was a good plug that you gave at the end, that's for sure. That makes me wanna, wanna go over there and do that. That's, that's awesome, you guys. Really, really great job. Leaders for a reason. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, next on our, oh geez, he's, he's ready and raring to go. All right, Mr. Fern, you're up.
Hey, how do you follow that up? Geez. Lane, I think maybe you were a part of the leadership group here at one point. I told Lane, everybody showed up for him tonight, so he's, he's proud to be here. I'm standing next to one of our most recent individual state champions at a hundred and twenty pounds. It's here for Lane. So Lane's a, Lane's a team guy, okay? He doesn't want the attention on him. So I'll just kinda give you a little background on the, kinda, kinda the wrestling season that we had. We've had a lot of success this winter, but we're focused on Lane and his wrestling team. Last year, Lane had a really, uh, it was kind of a frustrating event that he didn't have any control over. When you go down to the state individual tournament, you have to do some seeding on the computer. And long story short, it, it, it didn't go over well. We had put in a incorrect number and so he got a seed that he really didn't deserve and put him in a tough spot. So he had a really tough bracket two years ago and then this year, he was on a mission. He lost one match. He's, he actually has a hundred and sixty wins in his career. He was thirty-nine and one this year and he had an injury, so he's out for a little bit. But he was super dominant and we're super proud of him for that. In terms of his teammates, we had four individuals in the semifinals. And as a team, we had the most team points down at state this year, which is, is incredible as well. And Lane's been a part of some state championship teams here, conference championship teams. And he's been a, a true leader and I think what separates Lane and a lot of his peers is he's a soldier. In the building, he does exactly what we ask of him. You know, you, you couldn't pay this guy to, to, to misbehave, so. Literally.
He's sitting there thinking like, if you only knew.
Like, it's March, spring break's coming up and I just asked him, I said, Lane, you got any senioritis in ya? He said, no, I don't have any senioritis. He's super focused. He has great parents. Danielle and, and Adam are here and they've been super classy individuals to work with. Like I said, we had a major hiccup last year and some parents would have taken that situation and ran with it. They were super professional about it and I'm forever grateful for that. And, uh, you know, we turned around this year and, and Lane had a heck of a year. And it doesn't stop. He's doing some folk style, or freestyle and Greco here this spring. He's going to wrestle with the Gophers on Monday nights. They have some practice that he's a part of. And then he goes to Pinnacle, I believe, three nights a week still. So next year, he's headed to the Coast Guard Academy. And pending some physicals and whatnot, he's gonna be a part of their wrestling team. So he's a, hopefully another guy we're gonna be able to watch for, for years to come. So, Lane Anderson. Hey, Lane, would you like to tell everybody how you got the black eye on the screen?
Uh, that was from James Robbie. The Monday before sectionals, five minutes into practice, I caught the back of his head and I cried in the eye.
And he basically had to wear a helmet while he was wrestling for the rest of the tournament, so, um, yeah.
Well, it's, it's one thing that you learn from sports and hopefully the, the biggest takeaway that you have from sports is that sometimes things don't always break our way. And it obviously just, you know, you took it in stride and that's part of the learning experience with, you know, the, the bigger part of sports. I mean, obviously a state championship would have been really awesome to have and come home with, but you probably learned more the other way. And it's, it's one of those great learning lessons that you have and you're gonna take with it. Take it, take it with you through your career and what a great job, what a, what a great comeback story this year for you. And you know what? We cheer you on whether you're a state champion or whether, whether you didn't even make it to state 'cause just going out there on that mat sucks. It is tough. And that is, that is honestly just life. You're going to the mat every day. So, great job, kiddo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, kinda hard to follow that up. I think the rest of the meeting's probably boring after all that. But we're off, we're off and running, I guess, to the consent agenda items. And I think Gwen, you had vouchers?
Yes, I did. And John answered the questions I had. Everything looks in shape. So I would move for the acceptance of the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent, consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. The consent agenda items are approved. Off to the administrative committee and department reports. Mr. Gould, you're up.
All right, starting at the high school, the first thing I want to bring to your attention is a new club that we started this year called HOSA, the Health Occupation Students of America. This group's been doing a lot of field trips to the hospital and they had the good fortune of going up to Shell Lake, which has a really great health education center. And we've been spart, you know, the fact that like the hospital now will take sixteen-year-old kids has been a huge benefit to us so we can get kids in the door a little bit earlier at these facilities. But just a great opportunity and another, I think, really great program that's came out of our ACP, just trying to show kids the options that are out there. So that's been huge. Last week, we had our ACT test for our eleventh grade. We, our students and staff have been working ultra-hard on this, so we're hopeful that everything turned out well. But I know that the students, at the very least, gave their best effort. So proud of them there. We've already seen Lane here and his fine performance, but Mr. Fern talked about the other wrestlers as well. But just would like to highlight, it's really been a magical winter for us for the sport seasons. Our boys hockey with the state runner-up finish. Our girls basketball team had the most wins they've had in six years, seventeen for them. And then our boys basketball team, you know, just coming a couple of points away from making to the state tournament. Our girls hockey had a shot at going on to the sectionals as well. I mean, talk about just a magical run for our, our WI sponsor teams this winter. It was really a lot of fun and really did some great things from around, around the building. So it was a lot of fun here the last couple of weeks.
First-year coaches too for wrestling and hockey.
Yeah, yeah.
For brand-new, brand-new head coaches for both of those teams, so.
Yeah, so that was, that was a lot of fun. And if you were outside today at three-thirty, you would have seen a bunch of our spring sports already in full swing and they've been loving the new weather and of course, the access to the turf right now, which gets them out there right away. So that's been great. Outcoming events, we're at the end of the third term here on Friday. Pretty crazy, but three-quarters of the way through the year. Of course, we've got spring break coming up. When we come back, we've got Blood Drive sponsored by our National Honor Society. That's their annual service event that they do every year. We've got solo ensemble at Unity on April seventh. Pre-ACT, that's the ninth and tenth grade state assessment date. That's coming up April ninth. As well as that's the day we do our college tours for our juniors. UWEC, River Falls, Stout, and Chippewa Valley Tech are the spots we're taking our kids to this year. April seventeenth, we have our senior exit presentations and warrior time. That's where the seniors present to their classmates, mixed-grade level classmates. Future plans, how they got to where they're going, what they're majoring in, advice to future generations. We kinda do a, a pay it forward or pay it back type moment. And it's really cool for these freshmen and sophomores to see these kids that they've been looking up to, kinda hearing what their journey and story is. And then, that's it from the high school. Thomas?
All right, just like Josh talked about, the pre-ACT for ninth and tenth grade, we're kicking off the Forward State Test. And that's all students, grades three through eight, and then tenth grade also does a social studies test. At the middle school, we're going to start testing April second and complete testing on April eleventh. And presently, we're, we're working on the required forward online tools training. They're like little mini-practice tests that the kids have to take that, basically it shows them how to use the tools, to drag and drop and move and manipulate things so they can practice that before they're taking the test so that doesn't throw them off. So they're working on that right now in all buildings. Tomorrow's Large Group Music Festival, so we're excited to be sending off the middle school cadet band. And I think high school and middle school choir, or high school choir and, and high school band will also be performing at the Large Music Festival. Seventh grade takes their annual civic field trip on Friday. This is kind of a neat thing because, you know, they're, they're sitting and talking a lot about government, but most of the government that they're talking about in class is learning about, you know, the federal government and how the, the branches of government, how things work. But now they're really getting in and, and they get to go up and, and watch, uh, some approved court hearings and they go in and take a look at the, at the jail cell up there, the systems and what's going on up at the Polk County Government Center. They also swing through to the museum, the Polk County Museum, which is kinda cool for them. And then they spend the afternoon doing some local government and, and learning about some of the local government in our community. And Matt Pedersen for, organizes that for our school. Of course, we have spring break and we're gonna come back with a Warrior Way celebration. Again, we're gonna, just gonna be celebrating some of the, um, fine points of kids following directions and behaving appropriately and we're gonna be kicking off that state test, which starts then the next couple of days. We have our annual Tornado Drill District-wide April tenth. And then April seventeenth, we have another concert. So we have the Middle School Fine Arts Concert and Art Show, so that's our middle school bands and choirs in the gym. And this one's not held in, in, in the auditorium. It's held in the gym because we have a lot of, all the different art projects that our kids have been working on. It's easier to have it at the gym than haul all that over to the high school, so that's where it's, where it's held. And then we are off on April eighteenth for Good Friday. And then we're also kicking off, it's not up on my list, but we're kicking off middle school track very soon. Practice starts the thirty-first, so, very good. That's it for the middle school unless you have questions.
All right, good evening. This past week, intermediate school students that are currently in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade celebrated achieving their goals from last year. So we started setting individual and grade-level classroom goals about three years ago. That's been very beneficial in just driving personalized growth for our students. So I, I wait until the Forward is upcoming to remind them of the value of just achieving that goal. So we recently had that celebration. We were very fortunate that our current fifth grade teachers were able to go over and celebrate with our sixth graders. So that was something fun that we've come to really enjoy annually. On March third, our district hosted a speaker named Terrence Tally. Terrence was recommended to us highly by several other neighboring districts. And Terrence spoke with students in grades two through twelve. He spoke just about positivity, hope, resiliency, friendships. And the feedback from staff and students was, was very positive. He had a really upbringing, positive message and it was very well received here. You heard about Feed My Starving Children from our current fifth grade leadership students. Third grade planting, so our high school agriculture, horticulture class, each year welcomes our third graders over. They take a bus over and teacher and students walk our students through just the processes in the classroom and really just share what their classes look like over there. And one of the ending activities that they get to do is they then plant some flowers over there. And so those students then will take care of those flowers for us until May. Our students will go back in May and they retrieve those flowers and then they gift them to someone very special. So I wanna thank the high school for doing that and just continuing to foster relationships with older kids. That means a lot to our students. I'll let Abby talk about the Joint Federal Notification Packet. The IPO recently hosted a bingo night. That was very well received. They always have really great attendance with that. I just wanna highlight that all the funds that they make from all of their different events go to support our students and our staff. So a couple examples of that is our IPO recently purchased a classroom book set for teachers to add to their library. We love to foster a love of learning and a, and a passion of reading. And so this year, our IPO offered to buy each classroom teacher a set of books to add to their library. Kids were really excited about that. In addition, IPO recently paid for a field trip. If you recall, we went to the Eau Claire Children's Theater viewing of Three Little Pigs that was hosted at our high school and that was sponsored by our IPO. So I really wanna just thank them, you know, that's volunteer work, but it really goes above and beyond to support our kids and even just foster a sense of community here within the district as well. English language arts, so I've reported to you over the last couple of years that a reading consultant from CISA eleven comes and, and reads our work. So her name's Teresa Stanley. She recently was here over the last couple of weeks at the elementary and the intermediate school. And so her next steps as we're going into year, finishing up actually, year three of HMH, is now looking at a lot of writing. And so before she was working with grade-level teams, so she would work with just first on rolling out and implementing their grade-level materials. But now she's working with our vertical teams and that's been really helpful. So she's meeting with K through two teachers, one ELA rep from each grade, working on the alignment of that. And then she's doing the same here at the intermediate school, so focusing on that three-through-five alignment of just teacher practices, standards, and even just the scope and sequence of how we're rolling out units. The Forward Exam, Tom talked a little bit about that. We're a little bit ahead. We actually start the Forward Exam tomorrow. In fourth grade, our students need to take social studies, science, math, and ELA. And given the amount of assessments that our students have to take, we have found that it's easiest to, to break them up as much as we can. So prior to spring break, they're gonna be doing science and social studies. I just wanna highlight because of Act Twenty, we'll be implementing Ames Web at the same time. There's some overlap with Fastbridge, Ames Web, and the Forward. So this is one of our moves to hopefully alleviate a little bit of that pressure on teachers and students just given the large amount of assessments they have to finish. And then finally, EduClimer. So as a district, we have been navigating just the consideration of an online platform that really brings together all of our data points. We are very data-rich. One of our best practices would be to use that data. And so there's some conversation that we've been having at an administrative level, at a student services level, just looking at a program that many districts around us use to, to gather all that information and be really purposeful in how we're using it. So we're looking at a program called EduClimer. A big part of EduClimer's consideration is Act Twenty. So within Act Twenty, when we screen our students, we have to screen them, do the diagnostic assessment, let parents know within ten days, develop a personalized reading plan, and then track the family history surveys as well as the sign PRPs as they're called. And so we're, we're doing that all by hand at this moment. EduClimer really, again, opens up that communication portal, has a lot of templates, and it meets that criteria through, through the Act Twenty requirements at this point. When we're looking at upcoming events, we have our fourth grade concert this Thursday that takes place at the high school during the day. We have our fourth grade science and social studies Forward Exam and then spring break. We will come back and continue our Forward Exam and then you can see no school on April eighteenth. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, they'll be happy to get a break after that.
I know.
The PRP, Personal Reading Program, uh, Personal Reading Plan, right? Is that right?
Yep, yep. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, elementary. We have a first grade concert coming up this Thursday, the third of April. I mistakenly put it a second. Don't panic. It's first. Summer school registration is open. Open this past Saturday and is open through April eleventh. Laura Shogren is the point person with the assistance of Tracy Hendrickson on that front. So that window is open and those classes are being populated as we speak. So if you haven't done that, you should probably take care of that 4K orientation. We moved to an online registration system for 4K, for all enrollment actually. And we have a better handle on our 4K enrollment than we ever have in that we can see it in real time, so to speak. We can pull it up and see who's enrolled. That orientation for those families takes place on Friday, April twenty-fifth. And what that entails is the 4K staff meets those kids and vice versa. The better part of the morning, they meet all sorts of civic leaders within town and all sorts of folks that are provided, providing them with service, up to and including the Amory Police Department, attend that event. So that all happens on the twenty-fifth of April. We have a Montessori Show and Share that happens on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth. And I didn't put Forward Exam. We have a slice of students in third grade that do the Forward Exam, but that really falls under the umbrella of the intermediate school schedule and that will take place after spring break. It's not as big of an undertaking at the elementary in that we only have fifteen kids. So that's the elementary school report.
Okay, Abby?
Yep, so Jessica and I, we attended our CISA eleven. It's called the Joint Federal Notification Packet that every district gets every year. And it's kind of the World of Special Education's report card that comes out. In the state of Wisconsin, we have seventeen indicators that we track and the state tracks on data in, in our special, special education programs and services. Some of them are making sure we're making our timelines, meeting the legal elements of an IEP, a variety of things, how we're communicating with our graduating seniors that are supported by an IEP. So it's kind of our, yeah, our grade report for special education. And good news, in the district, we met everything and we were not, it's, we weren't identified in any area that we didn't meet the requirements that are needed. Some indicators are, data is collected every year. Some are on a cyclical kind of rotation. So each district is on a different schedule. And then every five years, we have to do our own self-evaluation. So I think we have a couple of years before we tackle that. But that was a really great report to see that we're doing some good things here in Amory. And then our high school team of special education teachers, we're gonna meet with the ADRC, which is the Aging and Disability Resource Center. One of our goals going forward with the high school team is really starting to bridge that for our seniors who are supported by an IEP or those that have stayed with us until they're twenty-one, helping bridge that next step for them into the adult world and with their, for their parents and family members as well because it's a big step sometimes from the high school out into that adult world. So they're coming to meet with our team and talking about how to make that relationship and bringing them onboard before a student graduates, just to have that in place. So I'm excited about those meetings. And then Jess talked about EduClimer. Any questions?
I'm pleased to hear that all the requirements were met there and that's awesome. Again, your first year here, so.
Well, for all fairness, I was all the teachers in Brad Bonner. It worked last year, so.
All right, great job. Any other questions? All right, I guess Brian, Mr. Pease, you are up for a transportation report. We're gonna talk about some buses.
All right. Sorry, I'm a little hoarse on the tail end of a sinus thing going on.
That's okay. Just pull your microphone a little bit, maybe closer to you so that she can pick it up. There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have a pretty short report compared to normal. We're not going after any buses right now. We're just kinda waiting to see where the budget lands for this next year. For the mileage, we're actually down a little bit and that will change just from the amount of trips or field trips or the distance for the sporting events. Fuel's low down. That could be from some newer buses. We have quite a few new buses and they're getting a little better fuel economy. Repairs were up, mostly because the tail end of twenty-twenty-three, I did not have a mechanic. So we were sending a lot of stuff out to different places and a little more costly that way. Tigers were down a little bit, just, that just happens to be. For the vans, it seemed to, this last few years, we've been picking up on special ed van transportation along with the McInnes Ventoh Homeless Act where we're having to go further distances for. along with the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act where we're having to go further distances for transportation. So that's probably why the mileage is up on that. Repair is the same thing. We had a few big repairs on some of our older vans. So we're kind of hoping the next couple of years, we can get some of our 99, 2000 vans out of here and get some new stuff. And a lot of them need tires this year. For the fleet updates, we did get two new buses. One was our normal yearly bus, and the second one was, we had that one that was rear-ended. And I did have replacement cost coverage on that, so it didn't cost so much for the district. Unfortunately, we didn't update it, so it wasn't the full cost. But now this year, Lead Home and I go through it and make sure we're at the same level what the current cost of a bus is. So when a newer bus gets totaled, we get a new bus instead of getting just the value of the current with miles and stuff on it. And then we're working on camera upgrades. We have a lot of buses that have some pretty old camera systems, and you just can't really see much of the bus or outside. So you can kind of see the amount of cameras. The left one is, we do have some that are a little worse than the one on the left, but we're hoping to get all up in the next two years up to the one on the bottom right there. And they add a dash camera and then a stop arm camera. So whenever they're stopped at stops, you can see the stop sign and red lights on it, and we're able to read license plates pretty clearly off that one. And it's, it's worked out really well. We have quite a few that we've written on that. We actually had this one that was a complaint that we didn't have our lights on, and she passed the bus. And then I looked into it on camera, and we did have the lights on, and she passed a double yellow but was looking at her phone. So she had received a citation for that, and she didn't want to talk to me after that.
Hard to see those lights when you're not looking far.
Yeah, she was pretty mad. She was pretty mad at first, but then she's like, you have cameras in their bus? And she got pretty quiet. They're kind of spendy. So the new ones we're going with, they're about $3,700. And we can install them in-house, so we've done a couple in the last couple of years, and they've turned out really well. So John and I have been working on the budget, just trying to see where we can fit them in. We're about four of them we really need to replace, and then for a total of eight that are the old system. But four of them are, we have one that's not working at all, one that doesn't, it just records wherever. You can't, it's really hard to find the right date. So it should be good. We do get new ones on every, or we get a new bus that does have the new camera system. It's included in the price that I give you guys. And then we do, we are fully staffed on the drivers. Some of them are split, working the morning and the afternoon, kind of with their other schedule around the district. And then probably could use a couple more sub-drivers and then kind of some words of retirement coming up in the future. So still looking for some more drivers, both that and bus and van. Any questions for me?
How often do you meet with Jim Lead Home to discuss our fleet?
Yearly.
Okay.
We, we work a lot with that and the fuel tank system. So we have to go through the insurance for that yearly now. That used to be every other year. And then we talk about buses and the fleet the same time then. Kind of when the policy comes up.
Most of Lead Home's questions, when we go to renewal time, which is now, are about our fleet and our buses and our drivers and their licenses and everything like that. So he's, he's got a pretty good handle on it now.
And I think we're a little bit better. We're keeping track of all our drivers and making sure that their, their license get ran and checking their records and trying to have staff drive rather than volunteers as much as possible.
You mentioned the, trying to work out some of the old vans and do something different. I know the buses are on a, you know, buy one every year, dump an old one. Are the vans on a similar schedule?
Not really. We do get a budget for, for small vehicles and lately it's been getting eaten up by the cost difference between the buses and the budget is just not enough to cover it.
John, is that, is that all the same bucket of money?
It's not. And that's, that's part of it. You know, special education vans, specialized transportation vans, that sort of thing are typically covered the subsequent year based off of high costs and stuff like that. So it just kind of depends on what the bus, what the van's actually going to be used for. And then most of our vans actually also are Medicaid eligible. And so we do get reimbursed by what's called SBS for certain transportation. That calculation is one that'll blow your mind. But we do get a certain reimbursement on those as well. So it just, it really comes down to what is the van for?
And Abby and I are going to work on, there's a grant possible for one of our higher needs students that would be able to get rid of one of our older ones.
What are the mileages that you're replacing them on? Like a 26-year-old van?
I think some of those upladders are nearing the 200,000, 210,000 miles on them. And they really just sit. We try to keep them as spare and not use them. Or if, you know, they need to use them for something that is messier, I'll let them use the older vans.
And like Ryan said, a lot of the higher mileage now is just because of McKinney-Vento, which is a federal act for homeless transportation. So and then the other one is for special services. We've got a kiddo who's being transported to Cameron three days a week or more. So just all sorts of various different things. So the vans get used and abused pretty good.
Could you explain that more to me?
McKinney-Vento. Essentially, it's a federal law that says we have a responsibility to transport students who are homeless from wherever they are to the school and back if they belong to this school district. So if it's a student who's experiencing homelessness, if they technically live in Rice Lake, because that's their temporary housing and they're declared as homeless, we're driving to get them both ways. And we wouldn't send a school bus for one, so we send a van. And typically, that would rule out then that van driver picking up any other kids for the most part, just with timing and everything. But that's a federal act, and it's a shared. So if the kid lives in that school, that lives, you know, is, our student is currently housed in Rice Lake, it's a shared cost.
Thank you. And then sometimes, last year, it actually, the route that I was covering, we would meet at the county line at a bus stop, and they would, we would transfer the kid bus to bus. And it, sometimes we can work that out, but.
Just depends on the kiddo and the situation.
And where they're at.
We use other options like gas cards for parents under that law too, so that parents, if they're willing to drive the distance, we give them gas cards to do that.
And Abby, that usually goes for the remainder of the year, correct? And then we have to revisit it?
If, if, yes, we revisit it, then the next school year, if the family is needed. Yep.
And typically, what I've seen, it hasn't really lasted too long.
No.
You know, I think we had one that was about four months last year, but they have, you know, a few weeks until they can figure something out. And a lot of times they'll move back in district and they can get back on a bus.
Or if not, I, I'm the homeless liaison now, and so I am in weekly contact with families and, you know, if it is a situation that it's a longer distance, there is a clause in the law that says what is best interest of the child. So driving an hour and a half one way, or, you know, to and from each time is, is probably not in the best interest of the child. So then we have those conversations about whether or not coming back to Amory at the time being is the best interest of the child. So there's a lot of ways that we work with them.
Yeah, we had one in Chautauqua last year that was kind of on that verge of like, they're getting up so early and getting home so late. It just kind of on the verge of being worse for the kiddo than just going to school in the district they're displaced in.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a real, a real thing that exists in, in every district. And unfortunately, in our district, just as much as anywhere else. And you hate to think about it, but it's something that's important and it's pertinent and it's, we need to be very mindful of. So, good question, Jo. Uh, shout out to the bus drivers and the van drivers on here. They do a, they do a job that I couldn't do. I don't care if you paid me a million dollars, I could not do this job. I, you know, they run in, in all kinds of weather, all kinds of times, just they, there are more precious cargo that we have here. And just thanks for everybody that does it, because it's certainly something I couldn't do, and you're valued beyond measure and certainly not paid enough. I, I know that. So thanks to the bus drivers and the transportation crew. Thanks for stepping in when you have to, because you drive too, so.
Oh, yeah. I actually was worried about it at first, but I don't, I don't mind it. Once you get to know the kids, it seems to get better.
What could you be worried about? What's to worry about?
Only 60 kids and one person facing the wrong way.
So I'm going to pull this bus over.
Not supposed to look at the camera while you're driving.
Right.
Any other questions for Ryan?
No, thank you.
All right, your turn is over.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
All right, moving on to our informational items. We have April 3rd, CISA 11 Board of Education Workshop.
Yes, we have Board of Education Workshop at CISA 11 for new elects and for some incumbents and some existing board members. Steve is our delegate from this district, so he is a person attending on April 3rd. And whoever ends up being newly elected here on April 1st, April 3rd is the date where they do that CISA 11-wide. And there's a lot of folks from a lot of walks of life, and it's just an informational update.
It's a good meeting. Learned a lot. Worth it. All right. And then we have first reading of changes to our staff handbooks.
Okay. I will seek to highlight to the best of my ability the changes that you see here. There aren't a great many. John and Becky will likely provide some assistance throughout. And we'll start off with the Certified Staff Handbook. The first item that you'll see is on page two. Those are simply name changes for the outgoing and the incoming that we already know and the ones that we don't yet know. Some name changes there. On page number six, you will see a clause that states some or all school staff are required to complete additional trainings periodically as required by state or federal law. Training will be provided by the district and is to be completed by school staff during in-service or onboarding time or on their own time at all. Depends on what the training is. We simply added that because we oftentimes are asking for folks to complete training. Page seven, 527 Rule has been crossed out. DPI Certification and Licensor. Simply a word change by omitting that the licensor is kept in personnel files and personnel files are kept in the district office. The second part is true, but we don't keep DPI Certification and Licensor in the personnel file. All of that is now done electronically on license lookup via DPI. It's obsolete language in essence. On page number 13, Travel Reimbursement. So itemized and documented travel expenses, provided such expenses are related to the employee's duties as expressed in the contract with the employee, will be paid for by the district. Only those items for which there is itemized documentation may, will be covered. So that's simply word change to make that more clear. Video cameras in buildings and on buses. Video cameras are used at all times for security purposes in all buildings. Employees are expected to be aware that video recordings may be used as evidence for any discipline or legal action. Buses will have camera, cameras recording in an unannounced procedure. And then lastly, on page 15, you'll see that there is a link that's been stricken, and that's simply because the link is no longer a live link in the Workplace Safety Guidance. So that's the changes. First reading, nothing is adopted here this evening for Certified Staff Handbooks. So perhaps it's best for me to take these one at a time, in that there are four documents, and you may forget your questions by the end of the four. So if there are any questions or comments, now would be the time.
Is there a placement link for that last one?
I don't know that there is. I did not make that change.
Not that I'm aware of, no. On page 13, for the reimbursement will be covered. Do we reimburse that at government rate, or how is that itemized out?
Well, yeah, I, so we, we typically, this is an extreme emergency situation. The amount of actual reimbursements that we do for any cost to any staff is less than 10 instances a year, and they're all usually under extreme circumstances. So for example, I'm traveling to a conference, the district card just won't work. I got to put car, I got to put gas in the school vehicle. Use your personal card and submit for reimbursement. I don't believe we have any contracts that do currently stipulate that travel expenses are explicitly reimbursed, but it could be a possibility. And just as Sean had mentioned, the, the language there has to change from may to will, just simply because we do have a legal responsibility to cover those expenses if they are approved expenses.
Yeah, I guess that's my question is, are we just reimbursing for fuel, or are we also reimbursing for mileage? And if that's the case, then is mileage given at the, at the, like, federal government rate or state government rate?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually don't reimburse mileage. So the school district allows those traveling on official business to use a school district vehicle. They are to be on an approved driver's list. So if you choose to drive your own vehicle, we don't actually reimburse for expenses at all.
Right. But they have to. It's just for gas?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have to add something to the language there, so.
Understood. The second document is the Certified Staff Comp and Benefits Document. I'm going to come back to page one. There are the year changes at the top of the page, and then we'll come back to the rest of page one. Page two, you will see two changes. The supplemental pay items that you see in the box that you see at the middle of the screen, up in the front or on the side of the room. We had typically paid those in a different pattern, as in two times a year. Now we're going to change that language, and it says supplemental pay will be paid no later than June 30th in the school year in which it was earned. The change in that will not be that it's a lump sum, but rather spread out over the course of their checks. That it's the same amount of money in the end, just paid out in a different fashion. But when you get to the end, it'll be the same. The item that you'll see at the bottom of page two, number six, states if a staff member is teaching under a license with stipulations, the old version of that is an emergency license. They simply don't call that anymore. They call that a license with stipulations. They will not advance to a new cell on the salary schedule. If they become fully licensed by September 1st of the contract year and provide appropriate documentation by September 20th, they will be eligible to advance to the next cell for that contract year. If the license without stipulations is issued after September 1st, then the staff member will move to the next cell the following contract year. License with stipulation is something that only happens a couple of years, and then you have to be licensed or you simply cannot teach. Those are DPIs, rules surrounding that. On page three, simply a change in title. It's no longer referred to as the Director or Personnel District Payroll Staff is what's been noted there. Flexible Spending Accounts. There is a clause that's been stricken there. It's simply not something we're doing any longer and no longer need to do. Health examinations, this has been in this handbook since I was hired way back in the day. That we, we don't do that. We don't require medical examinations, and we don't keep the originals and all that kind of stuff. We just don't do that anymore. So we got.
Yeah, actually, Sean, it's a state statute requirement. The new hires have to go through a health examination. The purpose of this change is just to, again, reiterate that we're not reimbursing people for their expenses.
I stand corrected.
The auditor doesn't like that. They just instead bill the district and we pay it.
Okay. On page four, in lieu of for health insurance, it's referred to as a medical benefit credit rather than in lieu of. So it's simply a change in terms. Doesn't change anything else. Medical benefit credit you'll see on page five. District Office, District Office, those are simply word changes on page five.
Just a question, that medical, the new term, right, the medical
Yes.
Benefit Credit?
Mm-hmm.
That's still a payment?
Yes. $4,000. Yes. On page six, this gets to be involved. You may have questions, but I'll read it to you. This is for the retiree-only, premium-only plan. So this is for certified staff hired prior to July 1, 2004. So this is generally our retiring out population of teachers. It reads, "Upon the death of an employee covered by this plan, the deceased employee's spouse and/or IRS dependents may use HRA funds that have been received up to that point to continue medical reimbursement. The deceased employee's spouse and/or IRS dependents may open a Mid-America HRA Premium Only Account where the balance of the funds may be transferred." And then lastly, "No new district contribution will be made to the deceased employee's HRA for the $9,000 per year payment. If there is a payment owed for the deceased employee's sick day retirement bank, the remaining balance will be paid out to the HRA in a lump sum." This is simply a gray area, a dead spot, so to speak, in the language, where if someone did pass away, we want them to still be able to receive the benefits, so to speak. And if you have further questions, John, Becky, or I can answer, because we've been working with JA Counter on this one. And if you have further questions, John, Becky, or I can answer because we've been working with JA Counter on this one on and off for the better part of a couple of years. Okay. On page 8, simply making more clear what blackout dates mean. It states in our blackout day language proposed here, the number of certified staff out of district or taking a pre-planned day off on any one day may be limited to five based on substitute availability. After five day-off requests have been approved for any one date, the date may be blacked out. Requests beyond five may be denied unless special approval is granted for the district, by the district administrator. The first five requests are, for any eligible day, will be honored in the order received beginning on July 1 of each and every year. So that's simply to clear that up, and we've had actually to talk about that a little bit here with our hockey team going to state and our basketball team almost going to state, and also for this Friday. That was a day that was blacked out some six months ago because it's a, for some, a travel day for a spring break purpose. So we only have so many subs, and when we get out towards 5 and we can't cover anymore, I, Gretchen, John, Becky get an email from Jill Jackson, our sub coordinator, stating, we got nobody left. So I, no one else can be gone because we've got no subs left. So it typically happens when we get past 5, not at 5, but it starts to become a conversation at 5. Page 9, we have moved away from the paper copy forms, and I gotta give, sing the praises of Aaron and Gretchen and John and Becky who made this happen. The online, I don't want to speak on behalf of certified support staff, but it is pretty much lightning fast. I'm working the elementary front on that. I get the first request, and within, sometimes within 10 minutes, I get, it's complete and approved by the six other people that are after me and staff know in real time, pretty instantaneously, that their paperwork has been approved. In the past, you fill it out in your building, it came over to the inner office, and they fill it out and they send it back. It was a matter of three days. So the language that you see here simply reflects that we now have an online time off system, and it's moving along much quicker. And the language reflects that. Page 9, payroll and benefits specialist once again, and I, yep, that's the last change in the Certified Staff and Compensation benefits. Now, the first page, if you could cycle back to that, Becky, that would be much appreciated. The first page, you don't see any yellow on for the salary schedule. There isn't any change for the salary schedule at present. John's probably the person that's best equipped in the room to speak about that, but really it comes down to two factors. We don't know what the state budget is, the biennial budget hasn't been passed yet. And second, we don't know what's going on at the federal level in regards to education. So in my mind, and after many conversations with John, it would probably be imprudent to increase wage unless, until we know exactly what our budget's going to be. Natural growth, meaning if a person is an E3 and they're about to become an F1, those changes in salary schedule for people are going to be granted, and that comes with it a price tag. And we'll go through that price tag at the end after you see the, there it is, the support staff. You can do it now, that's fine, that's fine. The price tag for that natural movement is 156,925. That's a 2% growth pattern. This doesn't mean this is the end and that the door is closed. It simply means we can't do it now, and we are all up against it in regards to a timeline because in May, there's contracts issued. And if we don't know it by May, we can't put a number that is inaccurate. When we know, we know, and we don't know right now. It could very well be that something happens in the summer or in the fall, and then what we would have to do at that point is reissue contracts and do retroactive pay. And in this district, in my 19 years here, we've done that at least a half dozen times, including back in 2023, we did that. So to be continued, what the rest of the story looks like, I have no idea. John, what did I miss?
I think you summed it up pretty good. The biggest variable factor here is biennial budget. And the states ask, DPIs ask, the governors ask of the state. Is, in my opinion, it's nothing too crazy, but it could mean the difference between a budget that's the same as it was this year and a budget that's $1 million more on the state aid side next year, notably in special education categorical reimbursement. And if that is the case, that means that our transfer from general fund back to special education fund is that much better, and that's just more money in the general operating fund. So that's why it's my recommendation, and frankly, after talking to and looking at all the survey results from CISA 11 cohort school districts, this is the policy and the procedure that the vast majority of them are doing this year. The last year was just a little bit easier, I think, for the last biennial budget for a lot of districts because a lot of districts were still sitting on a bunch of unspent ESTER money. And so it was a little bit easier of a decision to say, this qualifies, federal government's paying for it, we're going to do that. Well, we chose to spend our ESTER dollars wisely and not rely on them for anything. So I think Sean's assessment is 100% correct. We're just in a wait-and-see.
I had a question. Page 3, you use Director of Personnel and put in District Payroll Staff. And on page 9, for the Director of Personnel, you use payroll specialist, just that is intentional?
Yeah, so that's intentional. So the, the first one is just simply because we have resegregated duties in the district office. So now the Director of Personnel falls under my purview, therefore I also help her do payroll. So if there is deductions that need to come out of payroll, it can be one or both of us, not just one. And then on page 9, she is still the point of contact, but her title's changed.
Again, this is a first reading. You don't need to do anything with it other than offer your feedback. You'll see it again in April. The Support Staff Handbook, many of the same changes that page 2, name changes, obviously, those are the same. The same language on page 6 about required trainings. Page 7, Rule 527, that's the same. On page 13, the travel and expense reimbursement, that is the same. And on page 15, that's the same as what, same as the Certified Staff Handbook that you just heard. Any questions on that? I know it's a bit redundant, but it's the same. The Support Staff Compensation and Benefits Guide, again, we'll come back on page 1. The compensation, we're talking about making a change to this document that's a fairly dramatic change in pulling Clubhouse out and creating a whole new document for them. They just look different, sort of like putting a round hole in a square, a square peg in a round hole. We're going to bring that and do that in a different way, pull that out. So that's what you see there in the first paragraph. Employees changing positions, this is the second paragraph is where I'm reading. Employees changing positions, moving between Wage Scale 1 and Wage Scale 2 will remain at the same pay level, not including any position pay differentials from previous job categories. So if you were moving from a paraprofessional to a secretary, that would be an example. If the new position includes a pay differential, it will be added at the new base wage. There is a Clubhouse item at the bottom, that's being pulled out and moved into a Clubhouse specific handbook. Page 2, District Payroll Staff, that's there. Same language change, same language change in the FSA and the health examinations. Position pay differential, it's a reference to Clubhouse, so that's been pulled out of there. The payment in lieu of, the new term for that is medical benefit credit. Again, the same as the Certified Staff. You'll see those changes again throughout the top of page 4. Changing the title from Director of Personnel to District Office at the bottom of page 4. EEN aides are referred to as Special Education Paraeducators, is simply a different way to refer to them now. Requests for leave, requests for leave look a little different in that we're on a PLT system. Paraeducators and Secretaries Time Off Requests using the Online Time Off Request Form. Custodians, Bus Drivers, and School Nutrition Submit Time Off Requests in Skyward, that's an online system. Moving away from the paper copies of things. Inclement Weather Remote Learning Days, at the end of that, end of that sentence, I'll read to you. All other support staff are not expected to report. Support staff, including custodians, who do not report for part or all of an inclement weather remote learning day and wish to be paid must use a PLT or vacation. And we're staring at another event on Wednesday. Sorry to break it to all of you.
No, did our support staff, did they usually get one inclement weather day without using PLT?
No.
No, okay, it's always just been PLT, okay.
Some choose to come in, some choose not to. Like custodial staff, in some cases, we need all hands on deck because we get them removed, snow, but typically not. So those are the changes. If you go back to the document that you had up on the screen a moment ago, Becky, in regards to salary growth, everyone that you'll see here that letter D becomes letter E, I mean, letter N becomes letter O, so to speak. So that natural growth through the scale is 73,002. That's a 2.35% increase. Now, I'd like to highlight and make note of the, the numbers you see here are not exact because what Becky did when she computed these numbers is took everyone that's here now and assumed they would be here next year. Well, we know that's not the case. We know there's going to be some retirements we're going to talk about later. Those folks aren't coming back, at least I wouldn't think they would be. And they may very well be replaced with people that are coming in at a lower rate wage or not being replaced at all. So this number is not exact, but we can't know all those permutations. There's another factor that exists in the graphic that you see above here. Many of the folks in the room, the folks that are sitting across from me and the folks that are sitting next to me, they're, they fall into the category of administrators, supervisors, and district office staff. There aren't any steps and lanes and natural growth for those folks. There is no percentage that we're increasing anything, so the increase for those folks is, is zero. There's not going to be an increase at all there. Now, that's the proposal. This is your decision, not mine, and you don't need to make that decision tonight. But at present, that's where we sit with that category of folks. And I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions or comments. Again, this is just an informational item.
Was this calculated, I'm sorry, Dale, was this calculated prior to retirements?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and support staff, we still don't have the full breadth of who's going to retire.
Right.
So.
And we'll have people coming along, and we do all the time on support staff, so it's just kind of a moving target. It's an estimate.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Dale, sorry.
And so a lot of those numbers, the Certified Staff, Support Staff, Administrative Members is all subject to change once we get a better picture of what's going to be happening.
Yeah, and you know, and, and a good way of putting it too is if you look at the Certified Staff Compensation Plan, if we're retiring people who are I8s and we're replacing with E3s or A1s, you know, that's, that's a significant savings to the district.
Yep, okay, good.
Any other questions on the information presented? None. Okay, we'll move along then to the action items. Second reading of Board Policy 430.2 Student Participation in Foreign Study Programs.
What you see here is what you saw here last time. This is if a student typically at the high school was interested in being a foreign exchange student, traveling from here to elsewhere. This is a policy that makes provisions for someone to be able to do that. In my experience, we haven't had anyone ever do that, but we have an interested party, so we have to have a policy that suits their needs and to make that happen if they follow through. So this is a policy that you saw last time. There weren't any recommended changes, and it's here again. The only difference is we're at second reading, so now you would, if you wanted to, need to make a motion to approve or not approve this policy.
I would move that we approve the reading of the 430.2 Student Participation in Foreign Study Programs as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Student Participation in Foreign Study Programs, Policy 430.2. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving Policy 430.2 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy 430.2 Student Participation in Foreign Study Programs is approved as presented. Okay, off to Policy 830, Use of District Facilities.
This is a policy you saw last month. There weren't any recommended changes. We're looking at it here again as it was before. This is an amalgam of four or five different policies that simply we took pieces of and got rid of certain portions of. We have a new facility with new needs, and we needed a new policy. And Tracy, Becky, and I, mostly Tracy and Becky, worked through this policy. And what you see here is what we have for you to make a motion on to approve moving forward.
I would make a motion we approve the Use of District Facilities Policy as presented. One second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve Policy 830, Use of District Facilities. Is there any discussion? I'm assuming this will be a, a growing, changing policy?
I, I was written for that very purpose.
Right.
Because it's going to look different as we move forward.
All right, so we know we'll probably see this again.
You may.
And have things changed as, as we go along, so new combined policy. Is there any further discussion? Any changes? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving Policy 830, Use of District Facilities, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion, motion granted. Policy 830, Use of District Facilities is approved as presented. All right, off to K through 12, Social Studies Curriculum Order.
Jessica, you're up.
Okay.
All right, I would like to.
That made more sense to have you do this.
If Sean wants it, he can have it.
No, I'm going to pass this one to you.
I'd like to invite our four K-12 Social Studies leads. We have a representative from each building, and so as we walk through this, if you have any questions just in terms of resources or even how we consider it our resources, I would invite them to share as well. So we've taken this entire school year, front-loaded at the end of last year, that we would be considering K-12 Social Studies curriculum. So in our curriculum rotation, this is the subject area that is up. It actually lended itself very well. The Wisconsin DPI rolled out a new recommendation of scope and sequence. And so that is something that we wanted to follow and wanted to align ourselves with. So really, the adoption of new materials really made that possible for us. The value in following the DPI's recommendation of scope and sequence is that if we have students that join us or students that leave us as a district, is that most districts around us are following that recommendation. And so our scaffolding or even our offering of courses will follow what other districts are doing. So if a student has civics in a certain grade, they're going to a new district or joining us and have already had that coursework. So that was important for us to be able to consider a new source that really aligned itself with that recommendation. So you can see, these are the four wonderful ladies that led their building work. They were a huge asset to me, and they gave a lot of time, and so I greatly thank them. And then you can see our Curriculum Oversight Committee. So we took this past year to really dive into the recommended, recommended scope and sequence. We looked at different resources, how were those needs met? And then Becky, if you go to the next slide, one of the beginning stages for us was a needs assessment. So what do we need? Where were some gaps? What did we, you know, how did we seek to move forward? It had been about 10 years before we had considered any, either new curriculum resources or even supplemental resources. So then next, we established committees. So at each building level, there is a social studies team. They are the lead of those teams, and so really trusting them to meet with their teams and really do that needs assessment of what they need. That was a huge part of our step. And then we began piloting programs. So I'll mostly speak to the K-5. I was very involved in that. We really considered a couple of different resources, but again, what was really driving what we were seeking through K-5 was that new scope and sequence. And so we piloted a couple of different programs. I don't know if middle or high school, you want to just speak to your processes as you went through?
Middle school was very similar. We piloted three, we got samples from three different curriculums. Basically, kind of settled on our current curriculum, which is McGraw-Hill, and looked at a new one, TCI, and kind of lined them up that way, too. So we did look at several and piloted as well.
Yeah, we, we have, it's been 10 years, so we looked at some new resources just to see what was needed and decided from there what was needed and what wasn't, so, yeah.
And K-5 looks a little bit different because we're, it, our alignment is we want the same resource to be able to scaffold that when it comes to middle and high school, especially looking at EP classes and then just rolling out different subject areas at the middle school. It looks a little bit different. So the next slide that you will see is a summary of the expenses within each building. So on March 3rd, the, this wonderful team met with the curriculum oversight committee, which you saw on the first slide. So that's a diverse group of stakeholders within the district. Joe was a part of that as well. And so at that committee meeting, we actually presented on each of the curriculums, all of the supplemental resources. It was about an hour, and so there was a lot of questions. And we actually had examples of the curriculum that was set out that we could pass around and we could really talk about. And so at that committee meeting, it was approved by the curriculum oversight, and so the next step is coming to you. So you can see just the, the breakdown of K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. This dollar amount really replaces a lot of very aging resources that we currently have, or just even pushing our educators to find and bring in supplemental resources. This really fills the needs of all of our students and all of the curriculum needs that we have in, in social studies. So this is what we are proposing to you based on the approval of the curriculum oversight to purchase after July 1st.
What's the reason for the disparity in the cost amongst the buildings? Is it more hands-on on the lower level? Is that?
So in, in the K-5, we're all teaching at the same time, right? So every, every grade level teacher needs, we're, we're looking to purchase kits. We are considering TCM, and so TCM, each teacher has to have a kit. And then in addition to the kit, each student has a reader throughout that entire series. So it's, it's a lot. It's a lot more materials that are coming in. Consumables, yep, so consumables, those yearly pieces that we use. And then when you look in particular, 6, 8 is pivoting or continuing to use digital resources.
Correct. So we don't use a hard copy book. The last 10, in the last tenure cycle, we had a class set. When we went completely remote with COVID, we switched over to completely online and basically when we have remote learning days or kids that are gone, just easier to have one platform that the kids are used to. So there's not that kind of double cost. It's just the cost to have the online. Also, there is an option to buy a consumable, but when we looked at it, we maybe would be using a third of it. It's kind of wasteful to pay for a consumable that you're not going to use most of when we can have BlackLine Masters and run off more of just specifically what we would use. So that's, you're not buying both a hard copy and a digital copy. So that's a big difference with the costs there.
And honestly, that's been really important the last couple of years, is that fiscally responsibility of you can purchase consumables, and that's a huge dollar amount. So those are your workbooks. So every year, you can purchase yearbooks. And what we're just finding at all grade levels is that we aren't necessarily pulling out all of it. That would be a lot of sit and get, is what we call it, is where it would be just that direct instruction and not that hands-on learning. So we are opting to not purchase those yearly consumables. But like Lori just said, all of them are online as BlackLine Masters PDFs. And so a couple of years ago, I sat down and did the math, and, and we actually come out ahead if we were to copy all of those pages versus buying the consumables. And, and we don't even use probably a third of what those consumables sell us. And then speaking to the cost of the high school is when they run, you know, AP courses, they generally have one class set. Obviously Heidi can talk to that, but they're looking to purchase usually just a class set. So 20 to 24 copies of that, and then that stays in the classroom. So that's a huge, huge difference in cost.
What's the typical life cycle? You said this has been 10 years since you did this, so is that?
Our old rotation was 10 years. We have updated it to be a seven-year rotation just to meet the needs of, of our learners, but also as the curriculum resources are updated. 10 years is a, is a long time. Couple of years ago, when we were looking to implement a new ELA curriculum and we went with HMH, I could not get a 10-year quote for their online resources. It was next to impossible.
Are there any additional year consumables on the lower level that are included in this, or is every year another expense on those consumables?
No, this is purchased everything at once.
So, so you, so you get 10 years of consumables?
Seven years.
Seven years of consumables?
So this is a one-and-done for social studies. We will revisit this in six years.
This is like grade two. So these are like a class, you get like a class set of this unit of books for the, for each of the students. It would stay in house. The students went to take them home. They wouldn't go anywhere. We'd use them year after year after year.
Prior, when we were on a 10-year cycle and they would only sell you seven, we had to like do the math and then order, you know, enough so that we would store enough so that the last three years we had them. And it was terrible, especially with now the online things in it.
Yeah.
It was just impossible to, to make it work. So we're really glad that we moved to the seven-year cycle. And that's about as much as we can stretch out of them.
And the, oh, sorry.
Well, I just wanted to add, and the, the price tag that you're looking at right there is approximately $45,000 under budget.
And it's basically $180,000 for seven years. So you're looking at.
Correct.
Under 20, or roughly, yeah, less than 30,000, 25,000 a year.
Yep.
We got what you're going with.
Yeah.
It's okay.
My numbers worked out exactly.
It's on the fly.
Yeah.
I do like the idea of having like the readers and things like that at the lower grade levels, especially with the amount of screen time these kids already get. And so it's well worth some of the extra money that we're paying for that, to have materials in kids' hands, being off screens and reading words and doing the things. So great job making sure that that happens and those things are getting into our kids' hands. It's really, really important. And I think something that this board is going to have to talk more about, and, and you guys as a staff is going to have to talk more about very, very soon. So thanks for doing that, getting a jump on that. Joe, did you have anything? You were obviously at that curriculum meeting, I think, right? And do you have anything to add?
You guys already answered or asked the questions, and I would just say, this is where rubber meets the road, along with our teachers. And I would make a motion that we approve the K through 12 adoption. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the K through 12 social studies curriculum order as presented. Is there any discussion more? Any more questions? Take a job. All of those in favor of approving the K through 12 social studies curriculum as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes, and we will approve the K through 12 social studies. So after July, go ahead and order it up.
Order it up.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here for that, presenting that. Thanks for all the hard work. I know that's not an easy undertaking. All right, Start College Now, I think, I think Josh, you're on.
12 students have requested to use either the Early Start, the Start College Now or Early College Credit Program for next year, and it continues to be a wonderful program for our kids.
We can't say no, right? So.
We can't say no.
Just so everybody knows, right up front.
I'll make a motion that we accept what was presented. I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 12 students for the Early College Credit Program or the Start College Now program. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question, Josh. 12 students, I mean, that's a great number and all. I'm just surprised more students don't want to take advantage of it.
We've got a lot of great classes at the high school.
That you do.
That's good. All right.
The kids have taken them forward.
Right. Get in there. Get, get going. Any other questions for Mr. Gould? I, I'm not sure you're going to get a lot to answer, but.
Yeah, that was a pretty good answer.
Oh, that's it. Pretty quick. Sticking on his feet tonight. All right, all those in favor of approving these 12 students for Start College Now, Early College Credit Program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. You can't, so off we go. Give the good news to those 12 students and thank them for, for being an advocate for themselves. All right, and off, the next item is removal of DEI. Joe, you asked for this to be on the agenda. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted this on the agenda after President Trump's executive order on the removal of DEI and how different school districts, different private entities were handling it. First of all, I just, I have a document here that I kind of wanted to read, and I'm okay if you want to stop me at any time and ask questions or go through it. I want this to be an open conversation. And I, first of all, I appreciate your moral courage on, to address this topic, especially given its current political climate. I understand your concerns of allowing me to speak on this topic, and I am open to hearing your thoughts on this matter. I wanted to, first of all, say that I, I did ask for this to be an informational item and an action item. I was hoping that an informational item could be presented without the quick judgment of going to an action. I did also, I want everyone to know, too, is I take full accountability and responsibility of this topic. No one here was willing to assist me. I did ask, I did speak with Shar once. No one else has, has heard or had a conversation with me about this. I did want to have a kind of a more question and answer, hoping that we could get questions that I had answered by people who are more specific or more experienced in the subject. So I know this is a muddy topic, and I hope people will provide some grace and understanding throughout this process. I truly believe we all want equality within the realm of common sense with the possible removal of DEI. I would like to discuss questions and ideas and how to remove DEI initiatives from our school district to comply with President Trump's executive orders. I believe DEI has been ingrained in our education system and can be found in sports, curriculums like FastBridge, and Second Step, and social emotional learning concepts. DEI has been delivered in some form or fashion to all students at all levels. In some respect, in some respects, I'm in agreement with concepts of diversity when it comes to differing opinions from different backgrounds of everyone in all of our lives, but I will not believe everything needs to be based on race. You can see how well respecting a different view has worked for me, even being on that, this, this board at times. It's federal law to provide more resources and equality to our disabled and special needs students. When I lived in St. Paul, my mom would mentor children with Down Syndrome and autism, and I had very special friends growing up. I wish special education and IEPs could be a separate conversation completely, because I truly believe in providing equity for our special kids. I remember it was about COVID time, and I was at a board meeting. I wanted to be a part of the solutions here in Amory, and I was sitting, sitting in one of your seats, but we were in the gym at the high school. And I remember a mother of a special needs student begging our district to get back to school because of the hardships she was attempting to deal with while educating her child at home. And I remember, and it really pulled at my heartstrings, and I, and Dr. Durfey, I don't want to create any negativity with you, because I think you were trying to do your best, but you made a comment about the reason why we couldn't back was because, come back to school was because of equality, and that not everyone was coming back to school. And I remember that comment, and I went, ooh, you know, especially when we're dealing with our disabled kids, we need to provide them more resources and more equity. And I hope we can all understand that. If inclusion is to have empathy for others, I'm also in. I was a key player in bringing trauma-informed care to the district. I know how hard it can be to educate kids who don't have a stable environment because of surrounding addictions and dysfunctions. But DEI also seems to be a way to infiltrate and influence the agenda, including transgender or gender dysphoria within our school districts. The community has concerns of competition in girls' sports and males being allowed to shower in girls' locker rooms. According to Penny Young-Nance, president of the Concern Women's Council, an executive order was the pledge to an American woman, women stating unequivocally that there are two genders. Only women can be mothers and bear children. As a president, he will work to protect our safe spaces, our locker rooms, our bathrooms, prisons, domestic violence shelters, health cares, education, and yes, ban, ban biological men from competing in women's sports. In addition to these protections, we in Amory here should have an adult female member monitoring the behavior of our girls in locker rooms. There was a recent poll by the New York Times that 79% surveyed did not feel it was appropriate for men to compete against women. Now, if you or others are okay with males who, who identify as female, and you would be okay with them stealing the hard work and dedication of our female students, we are just simply in disagreement, but I will not hate you. We simply just have a different opinion. And I also believe that this conversation is a waste of time for the fray, because our mentalities will not change. The large reason why I decided to communicate this, about this topic with the removal of DEI from our schools is we could be faced with the outcome of not receiving federal funding in the future. I have made my opinion known that I'm concerned about, concerned about the current state of finance within the Amory School District, probably too many times, John. Last month, I did ask John how much money received in federal funding, and I was notified that it was about $1 million annually. I followed up with a question and looked on Wisconsin State DPI, and it wasn't quite within the year, but it was 1.2 million on the state DPI website. I am aware that private, private businesses that receive federal funding have already made necessary changes to this policy and procedure to comply with the executive order. I am also aware that other school districts have, have changed their policy and procedure to not lose funding. I will also let you know that some policy changes are a simple play of words. Instead of stating DEI, they're simply changing the verbiage to resilience, and people want to see change, not a play of words. The WIAA changes policy that only female students will compete with other female students. The WIAA has been a long partner with the Amory School District and other school districts, and one should ask the question why they changed their policy. The NCAA new policy limits competition in women's sports to student athletes assigned female at birth only. Would it be, it would still be this board's oversight to still communicate about what happens at practice in locker rooms. In regards to funding or the loss of, DEI exists in our school, and I question what could occur if the school district lost $1 million annually. In December, we had that discussion to a student-teacher ratio and the underlying reasons being budget. Dale stated the sky was not falling. We are currently talking about lessening staff by two to meet budget next year. This is minuscule in regards to the loss of 1.2 million dollars. In addition, we recently told staff we couldn't give them pay increase until we knew the future state of funding. If we lost $1 million, I would ask the question, would the sky be I have questions on President Trump's executive order. First, is it legal? What has been the school's response in the past for executive orders or emergency orders during the COVID era? We closely followed Governor Evers' executive emergency orders before President Trump even declared an emergency. We didn't have to comply with President Biden's Title IX executive order recently because we were already in compliance with it, with our transgender policy. I am concerned that because of our own political biases that we cannot see that the education system being very skewed left, they are unwilling to comply with the executive order of President Trump. I hope we can find a middle ground, and I believe that a policy that I will provide from another district will help with our compliance. I also spoke with President Glenn about this subject and asked for it to be an informational action item. She did tell me about the farmers' grants that were frozen after they were awarded. After recent lawsuit from the farmers, their grants were unfrozen, giving the farmers their grant funds as promised. John, the questions I have is our, is our federal funding in the form of grants, and are they awarded yearly or are they just expected? Prior to COVID, did we have federal funding? Did we use it? I would like to do the right thing and separate these DEI concepts that are political and divisive, such as resources, that can be found in our Second Steps program or curriculums, such as the way to find abortion clinics and the way to view parents as roadblocks. I encourage you to strengthen your relationship with parents. And lastly, despite whether, and lastly, I just want the best. I want the hardest working people to have the outcomes that align with their work ethic and quality. I did provide you a different policy from a different school that I believe, again, when we went over our policy, I felt it was extremely leaning one way. I found another policy that does bring a little more difference that we could still use while I believe still providing equality and respect. I also provided the WIAA, if you want to see that, I have the WIAA. I also provided the WIAA, if you want to see that, I have the WIAA participation for transgender students, athletes. In addition, I also studied, I went to, wanted to study the other executive orders, and I thought, again, they were pretty amazing, and I just want to read them off. Ending radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing. Ending illegal discrimination and restoring merit-based opportunities. Keeping men out of women's sports. Defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government. And to all women, happy Women's History Month. I'd like to move to look at the, I'd like for us to look at the policy that I provided.
I've got a question.
Actually, can I, can I, can I stop you for just a second? Okay, I just want to clarify a couple of things that were, that were commented on for the rest of the board members, since you're not privy to the conversation that Joe and I had outside of this exchange. That Joe did send an email asking for this to be on the agenda, and I'm not sure that if I misread the way that you worded that, but the way that I worded it is that you wanted the removal of DEI, like, as an action. So, and I think this was what I explained to you on Wednesday night, but the rest of the board members weren't there, so I just, I want to fill the rest of the board members in. That we could technically act on any agenda item, but doing that without public notice and having the public weigh in, I think skirts align and usurps their input. So I chose to put this as an action item, because if it was strictly for informational, we couldn't act on it tonight. The way I want, the way I read your email was that you wanted action on this tonight with, along with information presented, which is what we typically do. Joe's concern that he shared with me was that he was going to bring this motion and it wouldn't get a second. That's been happening in some districts. I think we've always run a very friendly parliamentary procedure here to have information presented and then have that discussion if we're going to move forward or not. This does not lock us into taking action on this item tonight just because it's on an action item. So, the information that you presented, you asked for this to be on the agenda about three and a half weeks ago, and I just spoke with you on it last week when the agenda had already had to be submitted to the paper, and it had to be done. And those are all legal reasons why we have to do that. So that's where this was put, where I felt it was best to put this. This does not require action from this board tonight if that is not what is being sought. And then, and that's really just the technical thing that I wanted to say, there's some other things that I think we could have a discussion about. I guess I'm asking.
Well, how could I expect, how could I expect you guys to just see the sample policy that I provided and expect for you to make an actual decision without reflecting on it? That was kind of my.
Yeah, and we didn't get the sample policy until like tonight, so I haven't had a chance to review this policy. So for me personally, I would rather sit down prior to this meeting and look at this policy versus our policy, but I would like to hear what you're presenting either way, because I think that's the only way you can make an informed decision, but that, those items came late, in my, in my opinion, for me as a board member, so. Okay, and then Steve, go ahead.
So when it comes to DEI, I am only familiar with DEI in relation to hiring practices. And when we talk about or what I hear conversations about DEI being beyond that and maybe making its way into civil rights things or ADA compliance, I think it gets really muddied. And I know that there's conversations around, you know, you have to remove those policies and procedures that are DEI-related. So my question is, what policies are DEI-related in the Amory School District? And I hear you talk about the transgender policy, is that the only one? Are you marrying these two conversations or are these separate issues?
That was my question.
My intent was to actually completely marry them, yeah, absolutely. And again, this is where I feel to have, I mean, you're talking, I mean, everyone knows here, you know, out of here, I'm a cop. I mean, I know quite a bit about legality, but this is where you want to have an attorney with a specialty in this. And that's also one of those things I asked for.
I do think we have legal opinion on all of this, is that correct, John? Could you present that for us?
Sorry? We do. What, what specific part? Because there's a lot of guidance.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to, I wanted someone to go through our policies and to review and decide which ones are going to make us in non-compliance for $1 million.
Our attorney hasn't gone through all of our policies. Our attorney has given his opinion on transgender policy. Our attorney has given his opinion on the executive order as it pertains to DEI and whether or not that's something that compels us to make a change now. Unequivocally, his statement is certainly be ready to pivot, to address the issues of DEI, but nothing in the executive order compels you to change anything right now. And his guidance to us is that you shouldn't until you are mandated to do so by your governance, which is the Department of Public Instruction. And that was not in any way anything other than very direct response from him.
Because things are still fluid, things could be changing and moving depending on what happens in the court system and all those things. So to jump the gun really quickly.
The executive order isn't actually, it's an order to the Department of Education at the federal level, to the Office of Business and Management, and to the Department of Defense, stating within 90 days, the end of April would be the 90th day, April 28th, I think it is. And what the executive order states is those agencies need to give the recommendation on how to address what's in the executive order by April 28th. My hunch is, once they get a recommendation, then the Department of Education is going to communicate with the Department of Public Instruction and say, X, Y, and Z is what you need to do, and you need to do it by that date. We haven't gotten anything from the federal government, they're not corresponding with us. So that would be my estimation as to what's going to happen, but in conversation with our attorney, he doesn't know exactly what's going to happen, this is completely uncharted waters.
And, and one of my concerns, and I'm not exactly certain how to ask this, so excuse me if I kind of muddy myself through it. Policies and procedures are written down so that you have a working document, something you can reference when the situation comes up. If we're talking about DEI and DEI is in, I don't remember your exact words, but it's in our sports, it's in, you know, all those different things. How much of that is circumstantial that we're twisting it to make it seem like it's a DEI thing so that, so that somebody could say, well, you're not compliant? Versus, are we talking about working within the policies and procedures, stuff that's hardcoded, that needs to be addressed and updated at that time that there's been final decisions and guidance?
There, well, on top of this too, is, is we currently have, you know, contradicting policy with WIAA.
But the policy does state that we would follow WIAA.
Our policy.
So then let's read our transgender policy right now.
Our transgender policy indicates that we're following the WIAA.
Okay, I get it, it says, it says it in there. You know what, maybe in regards to, maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe in regards to someone wanting to compete. Let me look at it.
There was, I had some questions on the transgender policy too. And so I think that there, to have a further discussion and some more review on it, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that by any stretch of the imagination. But it does state on this paragraph here, students are transgender, shall be permitted to participate in intercolac, interscholastic athletics in a manner consistent with the requirements and policies of the WIAA.
That is accurate.
And so as their policy is ever melding, molding, changing, we're in constant compliance with that. The only question I had was, and it talks about, or the conversation around men in women's sports. And my question is, what is sports? Because in our policy, we talk about men allowed in, in FIAD classes with women. So is that sports or is that outside?
WIA's guidance is just about those sports that are identified as WIAA sports. Your standard that would come to mind instantly, baseball and hockey and basketball and football, et cetera.
And that's what I guessed, that was what I would assume would be, and so when I read the transgender policy, that was the only thing that I was thinking we might have to take a look at to make an adjustment to.
But they're, they're addressed in two separate paragraphs, that paragraph that you read right above that. So those are addressed in two separate paragraphs. I did, I do want to talk about the, I think that, I know that your goal is to meld these two things together. I don't believe that the two things legally are melded together when we really talk about what DEI, the legal definition of what DEI is versus like what you said, the political definition of what DEI is. I think those are two separate things. Again, that's, that's me, that I'm not a legal scholar. But I did, I did want to comment on something that you said, that these other executive orders that you, or are part of this executive order that you thought were great, and that you were talking about merit-based and employment. And for me, DEI is the employment, the legal, the legalities of it is the employment. And I think, you know, you've been part of conversations at the school district that have taken place because of merit. Keeping the best employees, having the best employees, that's what this board does, that's what those policies are there for. So, I think that we are following along, along with that. We have legal guidance on this. I have not had time to review the Watertown policy and compare it with our policy. I'm not comfortable with removing the transgender policy as is written at this time. The, when you remove the policy, that becomes your policy by legal guidance.
That is accurate.
And not to have a policy, I think, would be very dangerous and would be jumping, like you said, jumping into something for the sake of jumping into something. So I think we either have to decide to replace it tonight with something or do nothing. But I don't feel that making a motion to remove it completely would be wise for the district.
I see this as two, we got two items here, right? Removal of DEI, which we have no direction, no guidance on. So, I don't think, I don't think we're, I think we're kind of wasting our time talking about it tonight. We don't have to make a decision. I have a hard time finding fault with diversity and equity and inclusion, including all people and treating all people fair. But I don't think we have to make a decision on that tonight. As far as removing the transgender policy, we're following the WIAA, what they have in place, I don't see a reason why we would need to change that tonight.
Yeah, I agree, Dale. I, I think I've never been shy about sharing my feelings when it comes to inclusivity. Especially, you know, certainly for our staff, but, but more importantly for our students. And I think that the studies have found that the more included or a sense of belonging or whatever terms that they want to throw at it now, the more connected is the term that I have always liked to use with the administrative staff. You've heard me talk about it time and time again, sitting here for seven years. Is that the more connected that students feel to their peers, their classrooms, their school, their community, the less likely they are for violent behaviors. We've talked many times in my tenure in seven years and probably more in Dale's tenure of 20 years here. Every time there's a school shooting, we have meetings and we ask ourselves why. And then we ask ourselves what to do, and we ask, and the rhetoric is always the same. We need to do something, but nobody's come up with the something yet. And I think that we've always decided that in this district, that when we talk about it as being included and being connected to something helps prevent that from happening. We want to prevent it rather than having it happen. And I think, and you know, a sense of belonging is important.
I, I get that wasn't an analogy, but include the police department, that'll help all with that.
How was the transgender policy originally brought to us? Was that guidance from lawyers, was something that was designed here?
The transgender policy has its roots, I believe, in 2018, we looked at it in 2023. I still have the guidance that you all received back when that occurred. I asked for continued guidance on transgender policy because it's been a moving process, obviously, over the course of the last two years. Our attorney has indicated that Wisconsin is under the oversight of the Seventh Circuit of Court of Appeals, which covers the state of Wisconsin. And in the state of Wisconsin, you follow that guidance. And that guidance states that our transgender policy is right where it needs to be. Our attorney has made sure that it needs to be. Now, there is another court hearing, and that came out of the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals, and that said just the opposite. So our attorney is not saying anything too sensational here. Someone's going to have to tell us which one to follow, because you've got these set of states following this guidance and this set of states following this guidance. And his indication is, at some point, the Supreme Court's going to have to weigh in and tell us which way to go. Right now, we have an executive order, which clearly comes from the executive branch, which runs directly in conflict with the judicial branch, a court that says you must allow a student to do X, Y, and Z, and that's in our policy. And the court says you need to do that. There's a district down south that chose not to allow that student to exercise their rights in regards to locker rooms and bathrooms, and they wrote a $700,000 check.
And that was Whitaker versus Kenosha, right?
That is accurate.
And, and again, that's, that's, that's a medical issue too. And attached to the transgender aspects of this, there was a medical condition with that. And if you can imagine the school district, the school the size of Kenosha, only allowing one bathroom for this child is embarrassment anyways. That was another question I was going to have, do we have, if, I mean, so again, are, are we just going to say the DEI part is dead and we can go to the transgender?
I, I wouldn't say that it's dead, I would say that it's waiting further information and guidance. I think jumping, jumping the gun too soon is more detrimental than, than waiting and seeing what happens.
But I'll, I'll remind you that any board member here has the authority to make a motion if they so choose. So I don't, I don't want anybody to feel like this is dead. If you want to, if you want to discuss a vote, if you, if you feel that you want to make a motion, you can certainly do that. That's, that's not, we're not taking away anybody's rights to do that.
I just want to weigh in. First of all, removal of DEI, Joe, I think that's very, very broad. I think Steve or Shar, one of you mentioned it. We don't have a policy on DEI. So removal of DI is way too broad, I think, for us to even think of addressing at this time because we don't know what we're talking about, there was nothing in our packets as to what you were referring to on that. And then in reference to the removal of policy for 11.3 with our transgender students, we have a policy. Right now, all we're dealing with is an executive order. We know from past experience that having a policy is important. And I'm, I'm weighing in that I would be definitely opposed to any of this at this point because of that. And also on the Watertown thing, we haven't had time to read it. But I, I do want to point out that that is only a draft from that school, that is not a policy. That's their draft C, which means they've probably been discussing it for a little bit. And so at this point, I, as a board member, would be opposed to removal of any of this at this point. Because again, we are here for our students and all of our students. And I, I know you chuckle at that, Joe, but just like you, you bring up, you bring up the finances, I'll always bring up the fact that we are a public institution. And I ran on the stand that I am for all students.
I, I prove it daily, okay? I prove it daily. So don't throw defense mechanisms.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not, I'm just saying.
I think she was literally just saying her, her point of view.
My, my point. My point of view as board member number five is that I, at this point, I, I think we, we've, we've heard what our lawyers have said. We've heard what the other three board members have said. I understand your concern, but again, it's only an executive order. DEI is probably included in so many items within our policies that I, I just, it's just too broad. Removal of DEI.
I don't think it's too broad to remove our policies. I think it's too broad for the removal of our, uh, curriculum because it'll be, I don't even want to know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of curriculum that will have to go away. That's another thing, uh, whether we toss up, you lose a million dollars, uh, from the federal monies or you lose a million dollars from all the curriculum you have to get rid of.
Can you, can you explain what you mean by that, like curriculum?
Yeah, within your second step program, the resources that are attached to that. There is, again, if, if, if you want to, if you want to give us all access to the second step program, we can, we can probably link to pull up some really unique subjects. I can provide you with more information on second step. I hope you all look it up. And, and try to get both sides of this story, Amory Free Press. And, and, and take the time. Just take some time. Again, like this isn't, this is an opportunity for, again, I'm in a room right now where everyone is on, most, most of everyone is on the other side. And I'm still here providing you a different opinion.
I, I don't know that there needs to be sides on this. I think that because of a, well, there, but there doesn't have to be. And I think our job as a, as a board is to not have a side, that we need to follow our legal guidance and do what's prudent to protect our funding, but also to protecting our students. And I think the muddy, the waters are getting muddied of what legal guidance is versus what your feelings and like I, like you said.
Again.
There's the two differences.
So I'm going to make a motion to protect our students by asking you to remove DEI from our policies and curriculum.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to remove DEI from our policies and curriculum. Um, whatever that means, I'm not sure that, um, I'm not sure what that means. So I'm just going to ask for further discussion and I'll start by that, that, um, I, there's no way that I could vote yes on that without having, uh, guidance of policy, uh, such and such that this needs to be removed from this policy. If you're only talking about policy, you're not talking about curriculum. I'm, I'm still not clear of where you're going with that. Are we just talking about policies? Or are we talking about wherever, whoever thinks that, I, I guess DEI is kind of a broad, we don't really know what it is. We don't have any guidance of what is DEI? What is it? What is part of it that you want taken out or that the president wants taken out without that guidance? I, I couldn't move ahead with, uh, with voting for that.
Sure. This is also why I asked. Again, I wanted different opinions. I wanted each one of you. You're, you're subject matter experts in this area and I wanted your opinions on this.
Sure.
But I, I can't, I can't reach out to you and say, I want you to work for me because I'm only one member of this, of this board. Right? And again, I shouldn't be doing that. And that's what Shar told me. I couldn't get Sean to work for me. I couldn't get you guys to work for me, but I wanted all of this to come together.
Okay. So, and what I, what I told you is that, that, that's why we're having this discussion here as a board so that it's out in public and we're not violating any open meeting rules. And if the rest of the board would like this brought back with more clarity, uh, with more opinion of a, of a broader presentation so that we know what we're doing, that's when we make this decision to table that and ask this team, uh, whoever would be best suited to do that. And I'm not even sure at this moment who would be the best suited to do that, to bring that information back to us so that we could make a better choice and a more educated vote the next time. That's why, there's no reason, in my opinion, to hurry this. But we have to discuss this as a board. Just because one, one board member thinks that this is what I want, maybe there's then things that other board members want that wasn't included in that. And that's why one board member does not direct the work of anybody else, including the district administrator. We work together to do that. Um, and with that, go ahead, Tom.
Well, you know, you talk about a policy like the transgender policy that's spelled out. You can kind of say, okay, that's what we're talking about. When you say globally, we want to get rid of DEI, which again, I think is hard to identify, you know, you're going to have a lot of staff very, very concerned and very, very worried. So, you know, we sit and talk very heavily in our advisory programs to be respectful to each other. There's laws out there to protect someone on their, because of their race or their makeup or their background. And so if we have, we have lessons saying, do not treat people disrespect. Don't be racist to someone. Don't treat someone awful. Don't harass people based on whatever their background is from. And so if you say, well, we can't do that, what, what do you mean by you can't do that? Or you, can you can do that? Or which can you do or what can't you do? To say we're going to remove DEI. I had a person a couple of weeks ago that told me that we shouldn't have ever taught the Holocaust because the Holocaust never happened and that's woke. And so, you know, the concept is that, okay, what is DEI then? Is teaching the Holocaust DEI? I'm really confused right now because I'm just going to step back and say, well, there are things that are mandated by the state to say you will teach these things. There are laws saying you will protect someone based on their race or background. And so if we can't then sit down and teach our kids, this is how you need to treat each other to be respectful and not harass each other, is that DEI? I, I'm just asking. I don't, you know, I'm trying to understand it.
And that's why I think that everybody has a different opinion of what DEI is. And I, I would be more to err on the side of what legal, the, the legal definition of diversity, equity, inclusion is. The, the executive order was very vague, um, of what that included. And like I said, I think it's been kind of bastardized, if you will, uh, by politics versus how this was necessarily born out of, of affirmative action. And then, and then what does that look like versus, um, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, um, your Civil Rights Acts, uh, Title IX.
Title IX.
Title VI, right. So I think it's just, there's so much that we couldn't even, I mean, even if we're going to get down to the nitty gritty, is the warrior way that we tell these students to teach each other, you know, to treat each other respectfully, is that DEI? And do we want to, do we want to get away from having the warrior way and teaching kids to, you know, do good things and, and be service members? And I, I think of the kids that came in here tonight, our, our fifth graders, and I think, I wrote that down. One of, one of the young kids said empathy, kindness, and caring were the three things that they took out of that. And that was the three things that you needed to be a good leader? And if, if we want to look at what that DEI is in those 50, 51 words that the federal government has now said are no longer, uh, acceptable, I think empathy might have been one of them. Gosh, and if we get to a place that we can't, gosh, if we get to a place that we can't teach our young kids about empathy, I'm going to be honest, I'm not the gal to have sitting in this chair. I, I, I'm not.
Again, I, I think that's, I don't think that's the intent of the executive order at all.
I, I hope not, Joe. And I hope if that's, you know, if that's what, but that's what we really have to root out. What is the intent of the executive order? And I, I haven't found it yet. And until I get guidance that says this is what it is, I would be, uh, remiss to act on it. Is there any further discussion? There is a motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of, uh, removing policy 41.3, nondiscrimination guidelines related to students who are transgender and students not conforming to gender roles, um, and removal of DEI bucketed together. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Motion fails on a four, one vote. Okay. I, I will state for parliamentary procedure laws, we, um, if you wanted something to be brought up, you know, or had moved forward, we wouldn't have had to push the vote. So, um, I think it's a, maybe a missed opportunity to have more information presented. Uh, and just to reconsider that, you'd need to be on the prevailing side. So it'd be one of us four, but board members that would need to bring that back.
Well, I appreciate your help and assistance, put, helping me, uh, put this together for another clickbait show.
Uh, I guess I don't know what that is, Joe. I think I was very.
It's good drama. It's good drama. That's what it is.
What's the drama?
That's, well, I would say probably the past 20 minutes.
You asked for this to be on the agenda. And, and we wanted an open discussion.
I tried to put it out gracefully. I tried, I tried to just simply give you a different perspective. I asked for a varying view myself. I wanted to truly be inclusive, to include everyone. And, and again, this is, this is how this ends up. And I, again, I, I'll, you know, I'm good with it. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Okay. Um, donations to the district.
Okay. Uh, Woodland Coral, thank you to Lou and Kathy Williamson and Connie Jorgensen on behalf of the Woodland Coral for their donation of $298.91 to the choir department. Anonymous donor, thank you for the donation of used electric, for the use of a used electric piano at the elementary school music room. Computers with Bytes, thank you to Steve Janitzki of Computers with Byte for your donation of 60 glue sticks to the high school language program donated through the Dune's Donors Choose. And those are the donations for this board meeting.
There's always something new. Very cool. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion, accept our donations.
All right. Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Gwen, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept donations to the district. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting donations to the district? With many thanks, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. The donations are accepted with many thanks. Thanks to our community. Keep showing up for us.
The Woodland Coral will be doing the same thing again at the end of April. So it'll be the same, gets a free will donation at the concert and those get divvied up between all the school districts, music departments represented by those in the corral.
Okay. The chair recognized Lou there, Will, Lou Williamson and, and, uh, that's okay. Thanks Lou for being here tonight and thanks to the, to the Woodland, uh, Coral for, for doing that for us. And, um, I'm sure the music department is, it's going to come in handy. They, the camera can't see us, so I, I gotta, I gotta say who it is. Thanks Lou. All right. Moving on to, uh, personnel action, which we discussed before. But I, there's a lot of things here for retirements.
A lot of moving parts here. All right. New employee, an extracurricular contract for Matthew Carey in the area of high school girls soccer. Contract addendums for Nate Cunningham, teaching high school geometry. Paula Stevens, high school geometry, and Chuck Wellman, high school foundations. Reassignment, Heather Han, moving from lower elementary Montessori program to the upper elementary Montessori program. Resignations for Emily Amundson, uh, end of school year, high school math. Chris Boyd for high school math and boys and girls soccer, effective of March 24th. Darlene Kleinschmidt, certified occupational therapy assistant. Becca Pearson, school counselor. Both of those are effective end of year. And Paula Stevens, high school dance team advisor. Retirements, we have seven total retirements and I did some quick math. I know I'm a social studies teacher like Mr. Ghoul, but I got a calculator too. Hopefully I'll do better than you on the math, Dale.
I was thinking the same thing.
I was on the fly. I don't know.
That's right. I, I added it up. I added it up. Total years of, uh, experience, uh, overall for these seven retirees, and we're going to recognize them here in a moment, is 212 years, 172 years in Amory. Well, that's a lot of years devoted to Amory. So in no particular order, I'm going to recognize them. Some wrote a letter and others simply answered a couple of questions. And these good folks across the way or someone else in the room, if they want to say something about them, I will give them the floor.
Easy, Tom. Easy.
We've already covered that, Tom. For the sake of your marriage, remain quiet.
We have, we have a spare room downstairs.
Okay. Danil Peterson, she wrote the following. I have been blessed by having the opportunity to teach in the school district of Amory for the last 19 years. I started teaching at the high, high school as a PE health teacher and a varsity softball coach in 2006, 2007. I moved over to Lean Elementary the following year. I've also spent some time with the intermediate school. I have 23 years of experience in education as a full-time substitute teacher for Rice Lake for four years from 2002 to 2006 and then from six to, to the present. I have been very fortunate to teach and work with many wonderful people here in Amory. I have some great memories with wonderful, caring people who have been with me through the highs and lows of life. May our friendships continue throughout life. My greatest memories here in Amory were seeing the excitement and smiles on the faces of our students when coming to PE. I love having fun and being able to have fun with my students while teaching healthy habits has been an ultimate lasting treasure. Retirement will find me enjoying more time with my precious granddaughter and of course, my son and his soon-to-be wife. It will also find me, uh, out boat fishing with my fiancee, Monte. Uh, we would also like to do some traveling. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to teach in a great school district. Once a warrior, always a warrior. Danil Peterson. And chime in if, has anyone got anything at any point in time. Tracy Hendrickson, 35 years, 35 years in Amory. 15 in the high school classroom before moving to community ed, which eventually also became clubhouse and communications for an additional 20. Favorite memories, I don't know that I have any favorite memories that stand out. There are some embarrassing ones that stand out, but I won't share those. If anyone would like to share it, no, don't do that, no. Uh, but I have a lot of great memories, worked with a lot of amazing people and am honored to have been an integral part of the school district of Amory for so many years and on so many levels as an educator, leader, and a parent. Because of the nature of my job, I have had, have my hands on lots of projects over the years, some very visible. I'm going to enjoy returning to campus for years to come and proudly saying to my grandchildren, I designed that. I made that. I helped with that. That was my idea. I left my mark. She ain't lying. What are you looking forward to in retirement? Time. Time for family, time to reconnect with people, time to travel, time to take better care of myself. I actually asked Tracy a week or two ago, why now? And she says 35 years, that's why now. And I couldn't agree more. Congratulations, Tracy.
It seems to be your standard answer, doesn't it, Tracy?
Are you going to knock around with a selfie stick now?
Alan Carlson. Number of years in education. He began his journey in education in the fall of 2010 as a substitute teacher. My official classroom assignment started in the fall of 2014. Amory has been my home for all of my educational experiences. Uh, favorite memories, in the spring of 2012, I filled a long-term subposition at the high school in Tech Ed. There I transferred three storage shed projects into sellable products. And not only did we sell them, but the class also assisted in delivering and placing each of them on the properties of the new owners. What are you looking forward to in retirement? I'm looking forward to having the flexibility to be there for my kids and extended family now that they are grown. In November, we are planning a trip to Thailand with family. Colleen O'Brien, I have been teaching for 40 years with 28 of them in Amory. Favorite memories are being able to lead groups of ID students in life skills classes. We are lucky to be welcomed to tour almost every business and service in Amory after spending time in the classroom, learning the related vocabulary, concepts, and skills. Another wonderful memory I have is the time I spent with students in the school force learning about seasons and changes we observed there. I'm really looking forward to more time to walk in the daytime rather than at pre-dawn hours and spoiling my new grandson with gratitude for the opportunity to spend the bulk of my career here in Amory. Colleen O'Brien. Paula Stevens, 33 years in education, 24 in Amory. Top four favorite memories. Number four, van rides to competitions with Quiz Bowl. She sang it, nerds. I didn't say it, nerds. Number three, catching my own children stealing candy from my desk drawer. Interesting. Number two, 22 seasons coaching the dance team with all of its ups and downs. And number one, all of the times I heard with enthusiastic expression, oh, now I get it. That never got old. New adventures, to quote Amelia Earhart, adventure is worthwhile in and of itself. Lisa Benson, 34 years in education, 26 at Lean Elementary School. Favorite memories, favorites are the times I have helped children solve problems, encouraged and motivated them to succeed despite obstacles and taught them many new skills. I find so much meaning in every interaction from the moment they got off the bus to the check-ins and group work throughout the day. So glad to have been part of it all. Additional highlights for me are, are. Additional highlights for me are directing four high school plays, hard work, unforgettable work, so rewarding, and being the AODA coordinator for 10 years. I really enjoyed research in implementing evidence-based programs, the programs that actually make a positive difference for our students and for our school. What are you looking forward to in retirement? I look forward to expanding my passion for nutrition and wellness and will seek opportunity to share that with others. I also plan to volunteer, cook, garden, spend time on music and art, read, and of course, spend more time with my husband, Tom. No, it said with family and friends. It says family and friends, but that includes you, Tom.
Today.
Today.
I, I have a Lisa Benson story that I just, I have to share because it's, it's still just my all-time, oh, and she's here today, oh, gosh, Lisa. So she had my second son, Trevor, and you know, this is fitting because today is his birthday and he's 29 years old today. And I hope that makes you feel as old as I do, that my friend called me up today to remind me that. So Lisa had him when he was just a, a little guy in elementary school and Trevor had a lot of issues. And his first year at school was really hard for him and transitions were hard for him and adjustment was hard for him. And I would get a call from Lisa every day at work. And this particular day Lisa called and she said, Shar, I have Trevor in my room and he's just, he's very out of sorts and he's holding my ceramic pig hostage. He's threatening to throw it and I'm trying to be as nice as I can to him, but I just want my pig. And I said, Lisa, that's your first mistake, do not be nice. And Lisa, and, and so many of the other people, some of them standing in this room tonight, was just instrumental in Trevor being what he is today. And maybe, Tom, you'll see him at the jail tour, but on the other side of the bar, he's the corrections officer there.
Yeah, make that clear.
So thanks Lisa for, for all of that because he certainly could have been there and it's very fitting for him on his 29th birthday for you to say you're done. But you, the lives you've touched and, and all of the educators, it's been amazing, but my personal story with Lisa.
We got one more. Julie Severson, 32 years in education, seven with Head Start, 25 here in Amory. Favorite memory, getting hired when there was a not a shortage, teacher shortage, somehow my resume stood out. The trust and respect, that's what she wrote. The trust and respect I felt by all administration, families and colleagues over the years speaks volumes to why I chose to have a career here. I spent seven years in first grade, six years in second grade, eight years in third grade, four years in five, grade five. Each grade level experience allowed me to grow as an educator and a person. It's difficult to choose special memories, there's so many. The relationships I form with students, I will hold a special place in my heart. Over the years, my family, my claim to fame was being the crabby teacher. Rumor has it, I have been updated to the goat. That was my cue to retire. Retirement plans are uncertain right now, my family will become more of a focus along with tackling my bucket list. Julie Severson. So 212 years and 172 of them here. Those are your personnel items and you'll need to make and take an action to approve those.
Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action?
I'll make the motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Dale, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the personnel action as presented. That was discussed previously in closed session. We said the retirements, they can't happen, but I guess, I guess we're going to move along with it anyway. So all of those in favor of the personnel action as presented, approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, personnel action is accepted. And community comments?
Sorry.
Pay attention, get it over here. Somebody else could have just run this name. Lynette?
Still early, yes. Good evening. As Shar said, my name is Lynette Wentz and I currently teach Title I, reading and math in the elementary school and have served most of my 30 years. Add that to the 172.
You're not done yet.
Yeah, you're not done yet. I'm not, I'm not. But I have two sons who also graduated from the Amory School District and I live just outside of town in Blackbrook Township. I'm thankful to be working and supporting and having had supported my two children in the district that collectively looks for the district, who collectively looks for opportunities to provide educational experiences for a wide variety of learners. I understand that you as a board have big responsibilities in making those decisions that directly impact our schools in a variety of ways. The community entrusts you to manage and prioritize the needs that are presented to you. So tonight I'm here in reference to the chatter that expresses my appreciation for us as a district, for you making decisions that maintain current class sizes throughout my time of service. So when I first started that many years ago in 1998 as a first grade teacher, after serving Title I, there were 22 students in the beginning of my year, 24 at the end. And those class sizes maintained for a couple more years until the implementation of the Wisconsin Sage Program, Student Achievement Guarantee in Education. And those key components included achievement through class size reduction, increased collaboration between schools and their communities, implementation of rigorous curriculum, and improved professional development. I am grateful that our district has continued this trend to serve our students and their families in this capacity. So I did do just a snippet of research in a Sage Program evaluation report done by Added Value Research Center in August of 2015, when the program kind of shifted, indicated positive and statistically significant effects of the Sage Program on mathematics and reading growth in kindergarten through grade three over long term as compared to students in non-Sage schools. So with that, when we define the effectiveness of class size and teacher performance, I have really struggled with how to articulate that because my, I'm surrounded by people in the trade and business. And so how does success look in the classroom with small class sizes? And so I have had to reflect on what is in my control as a classroom teacher. And maintaining the class sizes we have gives me the ability to build relationships that support confidence and community with my students, knowing the standards that are expected for each grade level. Presentation of lessons is in my control, that all opportunity is universal, differentiating instruction to students to support striving learners, FaceTime with students to increase opportunities of engagement, that is out of my control. Prompting feedback, whether that's corrective or complimentary, evaluating data, communication with families, and maintaining a predictable and rigorous schedule. And I can vouch that teachers are doing all of those things that are in their control, but the word manageable is the word that results in evaluating and adjusting the things that are out of our control. So when things that in my years of experience, the attentiveness and engagement of children as presented, active listening is different. Unknown sleep patterns for students is out of my control, family support systems, economics and resources for students, day-to-day health of our students, wealth, weather, including inside recess is a factor for student engagement and screen time, of course, is out of my control. So again, I'm here to represent or put a plug in and speak on behalf of teachers and parents and families, maintaining our current class sizes while adjusting to the changes relating to enrollment, which I was a part of witnessing at the previous in January's meeting, allows us to meet the needs of our students and families in the way that is effect, efficient, productive, and increases achievement. So I think I speak for all classroom teachers when I invite you in, invite people in to see all the good firsthand things that are happening in the classrooms with the things that are in our control and how we manage things that are out of our control. The phrase, kids these days, right, we are all familiar with it, is one we've all heard. However, from the eyes through an educator, there is a clear difference in what students needed nearly 30 years ago when I started to what students need today in education. So thank you for listening and thank you for the work you do. Thanks, Lynette.
All right, and that is everybody who signed up for community comments tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
I'll second.
Gwen, Steve? It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passed, as we're adjourned.